Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the September 28th, 2022 zoning board of adjustments meeting. Our next meeting will be October 26th, 2022 at 7:00 PM here in the Matthew Thornton Room. And if everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic which stands on our nation under God, in the name of the Lord, the King, and the just as well.
And Rodney, if you could please read in the preamble.
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abutters, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor of or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments shall be directed towards the chair. Should a question be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices.
For anyone this evening that will be looking to speak, if you could please raise your right hand to be sworn in. That's anyone who will be speaking for any reason tonight. And you swear to tell the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth? Alright, thank you. So it looks like we have a full board tonight. So the first petition that we have for the evening is Bowers Landing of Merrimack 2 LLC petitioner owner variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision resulting in one lot having no frontage on a class five or better roadway, whereas 200 feet is required. Parcels located at Toby Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map 1D, lot 1-4, ZBA case 2022-38.
Alright, good evening. Matt Peterson here. Whoop, it disappeared. Alright, there you go. You guys got something in front of you?
Yes.
Alright, good evening again. Matt Peterson with Keats Northridge Associates, here representing the proposed variance in front of the board tonight. With me tonight is attorney Andy Pearlman, and the owner of the property Jeff Ewing is behind us. The phase of this project is known as Bowers Landing. This was in front of the board last month for the decks on the back of the residential homes. This has been around since the 80s and 90s. These guys started building late 90s. I think Harris Pond was in the 80s. So this has been around a while. We are basically at the end of our phases here. It's all residential phases. The plan that's in front of you here starts off with, the first was the commercial Duncan Donut at the entrance of DW Highway. Then we built the garden-style apartments behind that. There's four buildings here with the clubhouse. Then the townhomes got built in the middle. And then we did the single-family up on the hill. It was Jared's Way about five years ago. And then the last three to four years, we've been working on the residential Toby Circle down here, and Town's In Place, it's actually finished now, but the aerials are behind on Google Earth. This is not 2022 Google Earth anymore. It's about 2019 or so is about the closest they're up to in New Hampshire here. What we are looking to do is we have three different types of residential uses. Oh, great, you got rid of my plans. That's not gonna go. Alright, well, I'm gonna go up to here because we got a different machine today, and it's not working very well for me here, so. Take a look at the tax map here. Currently, there are three lots that make up the Bowers Landing. One is located here. The second one is located here, and the third one is located here. Number one has frontage on Manchester Street. Number two has frontage on Manchester Street, and number three has frontage on DW Highway. What we are trying to do here is we have three different types of residential uses in the development here. We have the garden styles out front. We have the townhomes in the middle here, and then we have the single-family here and the single-family here. What we are trying to do at this stage is be able to, from a financing standpoint, plus from a homeowner's standpoint, cleanliness of this development is break off a lot in the corner here to house the multifamily townhouse garden-style apartments. We would not be here if we were just doing an industrial subdivision because we are allowed to do a lot without frontage in this district. There's lots in this district up in here that don't have frontage. There's ones that I used to work out of at 746 DW Highway that don't have it. So it's something you've allowed in the town. However, staff made a determination that because I was doing residential, I had to fall over the residential R3, R4 district, which requires frontage for a lot. So again, you'll see from our arguments, from the spirit of the intent and your ordinance, this is allowed in this district for the zoning industrial district. We're just applying it to residential from, again, a couple of different standpoints. From the financing standpoint of having multifamily units in the same homeowners association as a single-family, I think you can probably relate, there's a little difference between the entities and all three of them that are there. So that's kind of why we're here to the board tonight.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just briefly to clarify slightly, when Matt's referring to single-family, they are not technically single-family for purposes of zoning. They're still multifamily. They're single-unit condominiums, but they're all in the same lot. So each of those are an individual condominium unit, but they are a multifamily development for purposes of zoning.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Sorry about that, that's absolutely correct. So the lot that we're looking to break off is 7.217 acres up in this location here. Currently, there's an easement for Bowers Landing Road that goes through our whole development, which ties Manchester Street to DW Highway. We are currently under construction. There's actually a foundation that's in up at the corner here. So this is for the three multifamily units that we're proposing. One's here, and then there's two on the other side. So the finished product would be one unit here of 24 units, and then two 24 units on this site here. We started this permitting process at the beginning before COVID had started. These guys had held off for about almost a year, I think, once COVID had got going to not go in front of the boards until we kind of could do it in person. That really didn't happen, so we did a mix of Zoom and person over the last two years. This is obviously now approved, and this is where Jeff now is working through his next kind of condo docs financing and things, and that's where this came up. Just kind of briefly gonna go through, not briefly, but I'll go through each one of the comments here. I know, kind of like to vote on one at a time or so, or it can go through the whole thing, but...
Yeah, if we could, if we just pause after each of the variance criteria, just in case there are questions?
Yep, absolutely. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Bowers Landing Drive bisects proposed lot 1-4-1, which is the new lot we're proposing, providing approximately 600 feet of private frontage. The residents of three apartment buildings have vehicle and pedestrian access to Manchester Street and DW Highway through the easements. Allowing proposed lot 1-4-1 without public frontage will not alter the character of the residential neighbor and will not threaten the health, safety, or general welfare of the town of Merrimack. I also will add that a no-frontage industrial lot is allowed in this district. Again, I don't think it'd be contrary to the public interest by allowing a residential multifamily, which is starting to straddle getting more towards your commercial industrial anyway type of use in this location. Thank you.
Alright, any questions from the board? Please continue.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because, similar to the public interest criteria, proposed lot 1-4-1 will not violate the basic zoning objectives of frontage requirements because Bowers Landing Drive, coupled with permanent easements, is used just like any roadway in Merrimack. And again, no frontage lot is allowed in this ordinance. I think we've met the spirit of the ordinance with what we're asking for.
Alright, any questions from the board? Alright, please continue.
Granted, the variance would do substantial justice. The petitioner desires to own the apartments without being subject to the restriction requirements of the Crown Point Condominium. That's what the Toby Circle Condominium Association is being called. Likewise, the existing unit owners in the Crown Point Condominium refer not to expand their condominium to include another 72 garden-style apartments. Allowing proposed lot 1-4-1 with no public frontage, but 650 feet of private frontage, would be a substantial benefit for the petitioner and the existing homeowners with no negative impact to the town. The balancing test of substantial justice weighs in favor of Bowers Landing 2.
Alright, any questions? Alright, please continue.
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in on a question, please, Mr. Chairman. Members, good evening. My name is Andy Pearlman, attorney, attorney and Pearlman. With respect to that last criteria, the substantial justice, one thing I mentioned is that the existing unit owners would prefer not to have the additional 72 units become part of their condominium association, so they want to separate.
Oh, can you please just make sure your microphone's turned on?
That was like a live, unmute yourself. After all this time. Just quickly, Andy Pearlman, attorney and Pearlman of Nashua for the applicant. With respect to substantial justice, the existing unit owners have expressed their preference not to include the 72 units in the apartment units in their standalone, single-family home condominiums. And I have a letter to that effect. I was just, I just received this tonight, and unfortunately I have one copy. So it's a couple paragraphs, I could read that into letter, I could submit it to the chair.
Actually, if you could please read it, and that would be best.
Dated September 28th to the Town of Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment, dear board members, this letter is to express our strong support as unit owners and advisory board members of the Ponds Condominium for the separating of the property that will be occupied by these three apartment-style buildings for the lot that our units occupy, which consists of Toby Circle and Town's In Place. Our 65 units are freestanding, single-family homes, and the proposed 72 units are four-story apartment buildings. These are two distinctly different property types and are typically managed and operated quite differently. As an example, apartment-style buildings more conventionally ensure their entire buildings for fire, casualty, and liability in one master policy, whereas residential homes typically have their own individual insurance policies, which allow the homeowner to choose his or her own coverages, cover individual improvements like solar panels, and control the claim process in the event of a loss. Apartment-style buildings do not allow for this kind of individualization in control except as to the insurance of the contents of the units. Our documents reflect an attempt to be applicable to both property types and result in substantial confusion concerning what provisions apply to any particular situation, something we can eliminate if the properties are separated. The goals of these different property types can also be quite different. The regulation of these different types of units likewise is dramatically different since, in one case, the units are immediately connected to one another, side to side, and often above and below. Our units do not connect to abutting units. The need for tight regulation thus varies. For all of these reasons, we respectfully urge the board to allow the applicant to separate the apartment building lots as a separate development. Thank you for your consideration, very truly yours, Ponds Condominium Advisory Board by its members, Tom Breon, Bob Haverdy, and Kirk Ware.
Alright, thank you so much.
I'll provide this to you. Thank you.
Alright, good with number four? On the form, granted the variance would not diminish the values surrounding properties because the proposed use of three apartment buildings have been approved by the Merrimack Planning Board. The neighborhood is all residential with mix of standalone condominiums and apartment buildings. We respectfully submit that the proposed lot without public frontage will not impact surrounding property values.
Any questions from the board? Alright, please continue.
Unnecessary hardship. A, owning to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of that provision to the property. This site is unique. We have a residential project on a private road surrounded by homes and apartments in the I-1 zoning district, established through a planned unit development. While proposed lot 1-4-1 has no public frontage, the ample private frontage exceeds requirement 200 feet of section 3.02. We have looked to the general public purpose of frontage requirements. There's no fair and substantial relationship between the frontage requirement as applied to this site because proposed lot 1-4-1 has proper access to town roadways due to easements, and there exists ample spacing between other land users. And then B, the proposed use is a reasonable one. I would say the end use of three apartment buildings has already been approved by the Merrimack Planning Board. The residential complements the apartments and the residential condominiums that abut the property.
Alright, any questions from the board on unnecessary hardship? Alright, I think what I'll do then is, or do you have any other comments before I go ahead and open the public?
That's it for me, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. So I will open this to the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone looking to speak against this petition? Alright, I'll go ahead and close the public, and do I hear a motion?
Before you do that, I would remind the board, and I'll be talking about this a little bit later, that under the new state law, the board needs to make findings regarding the approval or denial of a variance. So I would recommend that the board concur, have a consensus as part of your motion that the applicant has satisfied each of the criteria and that the board accept those as their findings of fact.
So would you prefer that we have a discussion about it, or make sure that we include that into, in the motion?
Either way is fine.
Okay. Alright. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I see no issue with not having that frontage. I feel your pain. I'd like to make a motion. I see no conflict with not having frontage with this property. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we grant Bowers Landing Merrimack 2 LLC petitioner owner variance under section 3.02 of the zoning ordinance to permit a subdivision resulting in one lot having no frontage on a class five or better roadway, whereas 200 feet is required. The parcel is located at Toby Circle in the I-1 Industrial and Aquifer Conservation District, tax map 1D, lot 1-4, ZBA case number 2022-38. If the board decides to grant the variance, it should be conditioned on the subdivision approval from the planning board.
And that the board finds that the applicant has satisfied each of the variance criteria.
Okay. As stated.
I'll second.
Alright, motion made by Rodney, seconded by Lynn, all in favor? All in favor, okay. 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You two take care. Alright, and for our second petition of the evening, I apologize in advance if I don't do well with these last names. I'm gonna try. So I have Seth Fergala and Larry Topchin petitioners, and Seth and Kyla Fergala owners. Variance under section 2.02.1.1A.13C of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an accessory dwelling unit, resulting in a structure that appears to be a duplex. The parcel is located at 1 Spalding Drive in the R2 Residential by Soils, District, tax map 3B, lot 244, case ZBA case number 2022-39.
Sounds good.
Good evening.
Oh, excuse me.
If you just make sure that, I hope that they left the microphones on, but just...
Yes.
If you just state your names and, for the record, please?
Name is Seth Fergala.
I'm Kyla Fergala.
Okay.
And those are my parents, Michelle and Larry Topchin.
Okay. So it was a little close.
You are.
You got the Fergala part, perfect.
You did get Fergala.
It was the first time either of those names been butchered.
Alright, so I guess if first, if you want to let us know a little bit about what you're looking to do, and then we'll move into the criteria.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. First and foremost, I want to thank everyone for their time today, and appreciate being put on the docket for today. Pardon me, I'm coming over cold. Voice has spent talking all day long, so it's kind of wearing down as the day goes on. But ultimately, we don't have as in-depth of a proposal presentation. It's a little more of a simplistic approach, I think, we have today, so it's pretty self-explanatory. But what we're ultimately trying to do is get approval for an ADU unit to be attached to meet the, all the requirements set forth by the town on our current premises right now.
I guess my question is, in the resulting as structure that appears to be a duplex, does that mean that there's a separate entrance?
Yes, so, yeah, the setback, the illustration about the duplex part does throw things for a little bit of a loop, but ultimately, with the way the house is constructed, part of the need for the variance and approval today is because it's a non-conforming lot where we have entrances on Peaslee and on Spalding. Our current primary home does have a garage on facing Peaslee, and this dwelling would be subject to the other side of the property, which would put it on facing, the garage actually wouldn't be potentially facing Spalding, but it would be on this Spalding side of the street. So it would appear, I guess, by definition as a duplex or a multifamily where we have two separate garages on either end of the home. The construction proposed plan that we would have would potentially face the garage in a different direction where you, but you would be entering in on the driveway on Spalding to enter that, to gain access to that unit on the end of the house.
I see. If it helps the board, I can run you through the decision that was made by my staff and I regarding this. The language for an ADU is very clear that it needs to remain and appear as a single-family home in order to qualify for the administrative approval to get an ADU. In this particular circumstance, because they're adding a second driveway and a second garage to this single-family unit, even though it's an ADU in a single-family home, the appearance is that it's a duplex because you have multiple garages and multiple driveways. So it does not meet that intent and purpose of the ADU where it doesn't appear still to be a single-family home, which is why this variance was determined to be required.
Okay. Are the, is the ADU connected internally to the house?
It wouldn't be, we haven't gotten to the full development or the plan stage of it yet, but the intent was, I don't believe, to have it connected to the internal, so it wouldn't be passed through or be connected as one internal unit. It would be connected by structure.
You're allowed up to a 20-foot breezeway essentially to connect and still be considered an attached ADU. So...
Is there a 20-foot breezeway?
Yes, yeah. We do have some plans that we do, draw up sketches to illustrate what it would look like, and it would be attached by a breezeway. The whole, all the structures would be physically attached. But I think the question that is suggested was, is it accessible through each unit? And that answer was no, but they would be attached by a breezeway.
Okay. Alright, so operationally will also work kind of like a duplex.
Excuse me?
So, separate entrances, not connected inside. It is going to operate more like a duplex than an ADU, correct? Because you're not gonna have the...
I mean, by what you're saying, operate, for us, no, it would be operating as an ADU, but it wouldn't be operational as a duplex. But I understand what you're, what you're stating. It could be, appear to be in that capacity, yes.
If the home was sold, it could be used as an apartment.
But that's what an ADU is?
Yeah, well, right. But, yeah, because there's no entrance there, yeah, so.
I guess, so what are the other criteria? Share utilities, are the utilities shared between the...
Yes, it'd all be, all of the utilities would be serviced off of the primary home. So there would be no separate utilities, separate services. Septic, water, electric is all run through the primary residence.
Alright, makes sense. Now I have a good understanding, thank you.
Sorry. I could have been a little more prepared with maybe some illustrations, but we didn't, we didn't get that far into it, so.
Oh, no worries, I'm just trying to understand what's in front of me. So, no, thank you.
Yes.
Alright, so are there any questions from the board before we get started? Alright, if you want, if you can, please step us through the variance criteria, and just if you can stop at the end of each one in case we do have a question?
Yes. So just the criteria, the line-by-line numbers, questions?
Yeah, so just essentially reading them in.
Yep. So it's a grant, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it does not alter the character of the neighborhood, change the natural environment, or impact the wetlands.
Alright, any questions? Please continue.
The spirit of the ordinance observed because it does not impact the rights of others or crowding of the land, all setbacks for non-conforming lot will be met.
Alright, any questions from the board? Alright, please continue.
Granting the variance would be, would do substantial justice because it does not harm the public or any individual neighbor. The proposal is reasonable, is deemed reasonable.
Alright.
Much considered. The proposed plan would be 1,000-square-foot AD unit with a one-stall garage.
Alright, please continue.
Granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties because the existing garage is off of Peaslee Street. This garage would be off Spalding Drive, over 200 feet away, with a side entrance not visible from Spalding Drive and on an existing driveway to an old barn that has been removed.
Alright, any questions from the board? Alright, please continue.
Owning to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. Explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. The property as it sits does not allow for construction of the ADU on the existing driveway side of Peaslee Street. ADU is for the elderly parents with walking issues, and a garage is a must for safety during poor weathers, poor weather.
Okay, and B?
The proposed use is reasonable one because there was no negative impact on the garage, from the garage and the, and ADU to the surrounding area and neighborhood.
Alright, thank you. So does the board see that unnecessary hardship criteria has been met? Or do we want to continue to the next section? Okay. So, thank you, I appreciate it. Before we go ahead and open this to the public, is there any other comments that you want to add before?
The only, I know you'll open it up to public in favor of or against, just for note as well, too, we have been at this premises for roughly four years. We have worked diligently with the town and with the neighborhood and our property to bring this building up to code and up to speed, and we've met, we've done some significant improvements. Within that, we've made some nice relationships with the neighbors. We were aware, obviously, that this note, letter will be going out to neighbors, and we want to take advantage of the opportunity to speak with them and explain to them, and we encourage everyone to have the right to show up. Obviously, it's a public right to do so. We met with all three abutting directly. I know there's a list of abutters, which I haven't been notified, but I classified abutters to us as the ones directly across the street and the ones that share property lines with us. We did have a conversation with every one of them, and they were all signed off on it. They had given their blessing, so to speak. They understood what we were planning on doing, they have no problem with it. I know they're not here to speak for that truth, but they're also not here to speak against it, so that does speak something of that value.
Very true.
They've also appreciated the efforts that we put into the premises since we've been there, and all the improvements that we've made in the neighborhood and on the property. So they stand behind us for what we're planning on doing because they understand what our intention is, so, for what it's worth.
Alright, thank you so much.
No problem, thank you.
Alright, so go ahead and open the public. Is there anyone looking to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone looking to speak against this? I'll go ahead and close the public, and...
Can I just ask a question?
Oh, sure.
On the, on the hand drawing that you have?
Yes.
It was mentioned about a couple of garages. In looking at this, the driveway from Peaslee, that garage is gonna remain? And then looking at the dirt gravel driveway that's coming in, you've got three yellow, like little buildings. One, I assume is that 20-foot breezeway. The driveway, does that go to the new garage? And then behind that is gonna be the living quarters?
And then behind that is gonna be the living quarters?
Yeah, I'm just gonna put my fingers on that as well so I can speak with what you're looking at.
Oh, okay. Thank you, all right.
Oh, there we are. Yeah, the, did you need me to answer that a little bit with you?
I'm all set. I, I was looking at that, uh, hand drawn and although the, the printed one doesn't show driveways, you, I put them together and it makes sense. Thank you.
Do you have access to the garage from the ADU?
No. Do we have access to the new ADU garage from our unit or?
No, from, do you have access from the ADU to the ADU garage directly?
Yes. So the ADU, the, the addition would have access directly to their own garage? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I would think you would want that.
It didn't, it didn't appear that way, so.
Oh.
That's right.
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Do we feel that the, uh, five criteria have been met?
I believe so.
I do too. Do I hear a motion?
I will move on the Seth Fergala and Larry Topchian petitioners and Seth and Kyla Fergala owners that we grant a variance under section 2.02.1. A. Point 3. Sub C. of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of an accessory dwelling unit, an ADU, resulting in a structure that appears to be a duplex. The parcel is located at One Spalding Drive in the R2 Residential by Soils District, tax map 3B, lot 244, ZBA case number 2022 hyphen 39.
Second.
Condition?
Subject to the conditions in the, uh, staff memo.
All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Patrick. All in favor? All right, five zero zero. So, just so you know, there is a 30-day appeal window where somebody could come back and appeal this. As rare as it is, we just have to let you know in case you start to break ground before 30 days is up. So, just letting you know.
You don't know, appreciate that.
No, appreciate that.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At the board is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. I'll, I'll start with, uh, the easier of the two. Uh, you may or may not know, the planning board, uh, decided a couple of months ago to shift their meeting time to 6:30 PM just to try to, uh, alleviate later evenings as much as possible. Just wanted to throw the option out there, if the zoning board wanted to consider moving the meeting time to 6:30, um, we would certainly encourage it just for consistency purposes across the board. Uh, so, just out there for you guys to decide, that you can decide by consensus and we can make the change moving forward if you're so.
I started the whole ball rolling, so I am definitely in favor of it.
I started at six if I could, yeah, 6:30, whoops.
Yeah, planning board can't do six, but they can do, do six.
We have to make a, do we have to make a motion or we just?
I just need a consensus of the board is, and I can make that's an affirmative change.
Everybody's shaking their head, yes.
So 6:30 it is, starting next month.
Perfect.
Nice.
The, now the, the fun stuff. Uh, in the latest legislative session up at the state, uh, there was a bill HB 1661 that made a plethora of changes regarding planning and zoning requirements in state law. Uh, two in particular that, uh, play into the zoning board. Number one, doesn't really happen much with this board, but it does happen fairly common across the state. There is now a 90-day timeframe from when the application is submitted to the town to when the zoning board has to make a decision unless the applicant or petitioner decides to grant an extension. So there is now a timeframe that the zoning board has to make decisions on petitions moving forward. Uh, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. It doesn't, it very rarely is an issue with this board.
So, if a petitioner, uh, asks for continuance multiple months in a row.
That, that is them voluntarily asking for it.
Okay, so we just can't continue it?
You can't not make a decision and continue it at your own volition for more than 90 days. I don't, again, foresee, I can't think of maybe once or twice in the 12 years I've been in the town that we've had anything even remotely approaching that length of time in front of the zoning board. Planning board, sometimes it happens, but the ZBA, it's usually not, uh, not an issue, but I wanted to bring that up. Uh, the second thing is, what I referenced earlier in the meeting is that, uh, the, for both planning board and zoning board, there is now a requirement that all decisions must include written findings. Uh, not just a, you've granted and you meet the criteria, the board literally needs to say, and I think in the approach that we've taken as staff is based on what the applicant presents to you. If you agree with it, you basically make the statement as either part of the motion or before the motion that you're accepting the applicant's presentation as the findings of fact and then we include them in the minutes, uh, as is required by state law. We've been doing that, but it's really, really important and I can't hammer this enough. If you mind looking at the last page of your minutes from last month, on page 16, uh, line 13 through 16, the applicant or petitioner literally gave no response to the second part of the hardship criteria, yet you guys granted a variance saying that he met all the requirements. You can't do that anymore. You shouldn't have done it in the first place, but it's incredibly important that we're making sure that these findings are substantiated, presented by the applicant without encouragement or coaching from the board. It's not your role. It's not your responsibility to encourage them and give them hints and answers. That's gonna get us in trouble, especially under this new state law. So it's critical, uh, that we're not giving the ga- giving the answers to the applicant. I know there's the urge to help, uh, but it's not your role and it's very important now that we're not doing that.
So if the applicant doesn't have an answer, for whatever reason, at that point, we have to sit there and say, you need to give us an answer? If you can't give us an answer, we can't vote on this?
Correct.
Okay.
It's in a, it, the other alter, the other case is in, when somebody disagrees with an answer, you're not, you may not be unanimous in terms of thinking that they've met all the criteria.
Right.
If you don't think you've met one of the criteria, but you're still voting to grant the variance, you're contradicting yourself. And that's happened a few times in the past as well where somebody will make a note that, yeah, I don't really think they've met this, but you still voted to grant the, the variance. So you need to be consistent with yourself. If you don't think they've met anything, you vote to deny. Uh, it's just now with this new requirements that we have in state law, it's more important than ever and it's grounds for immediate remand and reversal by superior court if we end up not having these appropriate written findings moving forward. So, I know that there's been back and forth, uh, having watched some of the recent meetings between members about the role of the board and how much you should be getting assistance. Please don't. I know it's human nature to want to help, but it's just not your job when you're sitting up here. I think other than that, um, if you weren't aware, Casey Wolf is no longer with us. Uh, she's now been the town planner in Epping for two weeks and, uh.
And her office has a window.
Yes, it does. Uh, my, uh, hiring period, the initial opening closes on Friday. I'm hopeful to find somebody again. Uh, this position by its nature is an entry level, kind of a springboard position. This will be my sixth assistant planner in my 12 years here, so every couple of years, this seems to be the thing. But, uh, it's been a great launching pad for a couple of really great professionals. Uh, Donna Polley, I don't know how many of you remember Donna for years, she's actually the director in Dover now. Uh, Kelly Walsh is now the town planner in Londonderry. We've got Casey over in Epping now, so this, this really has been a good position for learning the ropes in municipal government, moving on to bigger and better things. It makes my job a little harder to keep it filled, but I'd much rather have a competent person who's gonna be good at what they do and move on to something better than somebody who's gonna be here for 10 years and just filling the space, so.
I actually approached her and I'm like, what is with the turnover with this role? And she explained to me it's by design.
Yeah.
So I had, I honestly had no idea until she explained it.
So I think that covers it, uh, from my perspective. Uh, Robert and I are gonna do our best to fill all the night meetings covering you guys in the planning board. Planning board is gonna get a lot busier next month. It's, we've got a huge amount of applications for the second meeting of the month, including CIP, because we're doing that earlier too, so. That, uh, kind of fills mine. Any questions? Any of you have for us? Um, as always, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Association, other training opportunities are there. That's another part of that new state law is making those types of training more accessible. So always encourage, um, if you see something you want to do, let us know. We'll cover the costs and we'll get you that training.
Always appreciate it. Any other items? Chuck?
At the last meeting of the zoning board, um, the fire chief, the fire marshal and their first lieutenant, uh, came to the meeting and sat through the meeting. Um, they weren't on the agenda, but they did come up and speak to the zoning board after the meeting was adjourned. So I was wanting to inquire what the nature of their business was.
Yeah, they were, they were just here to introduce themselves. So they had no business for the zoning board.
I know the reason why the chief and, uh, the fire marshal were here was related to the Stewart's ambulance case. Uh, the, I just had a fairly lengthy meeting with the new chief and the assistant chief and the building inspector and some of their fire inspectors just so they get a real understanding as to how process works with the planning and zoning boards. Uh, the chief in particular didn't understand that just because the zoning board grants something, it doesn't exempt them from the requirements that the fire department or the building department has in terms of permitting. Uh, so he wanted to be here to watch that process take place and that's why normally, if you remember that memo I wrote for the Stewart's ambulance, I literally put in there that they had to meet the by, fire and building codes as part of what the conditions. That's normally not said because it's implied, but I wanted to just reiterate to them that that's typically how it works and that they, um, so we, we had a nice lengthy meeting with the town manager to try to hash out some of the, uh, challenges that we've been having between the two departments. Where building is part of the fire department, it's rather unusual in terms of the way, uh, structures are in New Hampshire. Uh, I think we're one of three communities in the state that structures our building department as part of fire. Um, they were not part of fire until, I want to say about 13 years ago, they were part of community development, so. It's a little bit of a challenge at times with turnover in their staff, especially in leadership, just making sure that they're all on the same page.
From my perspective, Chuck, that, when they came up to here, it was non-business. They were coming up as individuals introducing themselves, well, to me anyway, as an individual. It, it, I, I did not see any sort of business. I think they were just, he was being polite and introducing himself.
Well, you know, I, I've been trying to gain an audience with the, uh, fire chief for about three months and I, I understand how busy he is, so very nice that he came over here and wanted to introduce himself to everybody and, uh, get welcomed into Merrimack. But, uh, uh, regardless, um, we do expect professional behavior from both the board, uh, and our employees in the town of Merrimack. And, uh, while there may have been nothing nefarious about it, uh, the public always takes an opportunity like that to, uh, speculate that there may well have been. And so I would encourage, uh, a closer, uh, attention to the, uh, appearance of a violation of the right to know law.
When, when we adjourn, doesn't the meeting essentially end?
If there is still a quorum of members present and anything related to businesses discussed, you're still technically a public meeting. So you run the risk of violating right to know if you discuss any business-related items.
I have nothing else. A quorum is not just three members appearing together at the same place at the same time. It's three members appearing at the same place at the same time and then discussing.
Discussing the board's business.
Okay.
May I ask what your recommendation, recommendation would be should something similar to that? I mean, I'm, I'm not saying we should be rude, but do we tell them back to your seat? I mean.
No, you, what I would say is that we appreciate the opportunity to chat, but because we're still in a public forum, there's the appearance of potential, um, violations of right to know and open, open records.
I want to avoid being rude.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Sorry. You had another one?
No, I'm, I'm.
Oh, okay. All right, motion made by Lynn, seconded by Ben, all in favor? All right, five zero zero. Who wants to go for the last one? Motion to adjourn. All right, motion made by Ben, seconded by Rodney, all in favor? So five zero zero. Good night, everyone. See you all in a month.
See you in a month.